For the evening of April 22, 2025. My name is Rob Chappetti. I have the privilege of serving as Chair of the ZBA. I'm going to take a moment and introduce my colleagues to my left and the board. We will establish for sort of legal purposes, the five voting members. But I will give you a hint. It's probably going to be the five people you see this evening. I will go through just a quick flow of how the evening will progress. For any of you that were are lucky enough to have never been to his only Board of Appeals hearing in the past, I will go through just quickly the big sort of headline sequencing of what we do, how we do it, and how each application is taken. And then this way, there's a sort of a familiarity of what to expect. So without further ado, I'm going to take the role. We'll establish that we have a legal quorum to conduct the business of the ZBA this evening, and then we'll get right started into the into the agenda. As Mr. Porter, to my immediate right, our our Planning Director has pointed out, we're also recording and broadcasting to an ever waning but never gone community of online folks. And this is sort of a COVID adaption that we still do. It's a function of convenience. So we will be publishing everything that's being seen by us on our laptops. Anything that's been submitted, anything that's being referred to, we will be looking at. It will also be up on the screen, and anyone at home will be seeing the exact screen behind me. To my far right is Ms. Gretchen Joy. She is she is the keeper of the minutes. She has the unfortunate blessing of having to write down everything that we all say. If you are going to speak during public comment, we just ask that you kindly give your name and address so that Ms. Joy can record that. We don't have any podium or microphone, so this device in front of me is called an owl, and it is recording us and for anyone that might be listening. But you just feel free to speak from your seat and just give us your name and address. So calling the role of the Newbury Board Zoning Board of Appeals. We have Mr. Ken Swanton here, Mr. Walter Chan here, Mr. Stephen DeWile here, Mr. Larry Ginta.
Present.
And Rob Chappetti, I'm present. That makes us five, one, two, three, four, five. In order for the ZBA to conduct business, we have to at least have a minimum form of four voting members. We have five, and our five voting members will obviously be those present to my left. So we do have a quorum, and we'll jump into our agenda this evening. When we get into the public hearings, we're going to go through the sequence of hearings. The way this works is it's broken down into segments. As the Chair, I will read the essentially a brief version of the public notice. I'll describe the application that's before us by address, by applicant, and then a brief sort of natural language version of what the applicant seeks. You know, the applicant seeks a variance or a special permit for nonconformities. That's the legal permitting that the applicant is seeking. However, to make it simpler for anyone that's following along or is here to speak in connection with an application or is watching and following online, I'll also simply describe it in just as, you know, brief and natural, you know, language as possible. So, you know, the applicant seeks all necessary permits to construct a three season porch or to extend an existing nonconformity and construct X, Y, Z. So it'll be easy to sort of understand exactly what is before us. After I read the public notice, I'll then turn the floor over to the applicant or the applicant's representatives, whether it be the applicant's attorney or architect or engineer or designer or any or all of the above. We'll hear from the applicant. The applicant will make their presentation usually based on presentation slides and other materials. Those materials will be published behind me. They're also on our laptop, so we're seeing them at the same time. And anyone online is also seeing what we're seeing and what you're seeing. After the applicant makes the presentation, I'll close that portion of the public hearing, and we go into public comment. During public comment, Mr. Porter will put a slide up, which is really sort of a placard that describes the rules of the road with respect to public comment. You may simply just raise your hand. I'll recognize you and no specific order. We'll ask that you give your name and address, and then just simply speak your mind. You needn't be pro or con, though you're welcome to identify yourself as such. You can say I'm, you know, speaking in favor of or, you know, in opposition to, or you can simply just share your thoughts. There's no reason. We don't require that you fall into a column, but you're welcome to if you so choose. We do ask that you kindly keep it to about two minutes. We usually have no issue with that. I will as gently and courteously as possible try to signal to any member of the public who's speaking to kindly sort of bring it to a to a conclusion, just in the interest of the evening, our flow, and others that may wish to speak in other applications. Once we've gone through the room live by hands during public comment, we'll poll anyone that might be logged on online. Mr. Porter will let me know if there's anyone who raises their hand. And then for anyone that is online, is there anyone online right now?
Just a minute now.
Okay. Anyone that's online will be able to electronically raise their hand on Zoom. We'll recognize that, and we will hear from them as well. Once we've gone through the room, then online in public comment, I'll close that portion of the public hearing, and we go to questions from the board. This is usually the point of the evening when I point out, if you haven't been to a board meeting like this before, that if you choose to phrase your public comment in the form of a question, please know that we mean no discourtesy to anyone if we do not respond directly to your question. We're hearing your question. We're all going to be taking notes. But the format of the evening is such that we won't be able to engage in an answer on the spot and in that moment. But we're hearing those questions, and you will surely see some version, if not an identical recount of your question, in the third segment of the of the evening called Questions From the Board. This is when board members will pose questions to the applicant, and in many instances, we'll be adapting questions that have been raised during public comment that are not unusually also shared by members of the board. Once we've gone through questions from the board, I'll close that portion of the public hearing, and we go to the final segment, which is deliberations. Deliberations is when the members of the board here will basically discuss out loud, you know, in full sort of, you know, public view and, you know, public observation, whether or not the applicant and the application meets the legal criteria for whatever relief is being sought. If the applicant is seeking a variance, for instance, there's certain legal criteria that we must find as a board. So we discuss it, and we, you know, we deliberate out loud, and we sometimes come up with additional questions. And if that happens, we pose those questions. Once we have finished our deliberations, we close that final portion of the public hearing, and this is when I will entertain a motion by any member of the ZBA. I'll also just let everyone know that the format is a Robert's Rules of Order format. So you will hear me entertain, you know, does any member of the board have a motion? And it's always going to be offered in the affirmative, which means it's going to be offered as a motion to approve. That's just simply a procedural mechanism. It doesn't mean that the that the board member who is offering that motion plans to approve it or vote in favor of it or supports it. It's simply the technical and procedural mechanism to get that motion to a vote. Once the motion to approve is made and then seconded by another member, I call the role, and we will call the role. It'll be a yea or nay vote. And in order for the application to succeed, at least four members of the five that are here have to vote the affirm, have to vote yes. If four out of the five members vote yes, then the motion carries and the application's approved. And that's essentially the flow of this evening, and it's the flow of every other Tuesday evening for all of us. But I always take a moment to just share it if, you know, in the event that folks are in the in the room that might be here for the first time. I just want to have an understanding of what to expect. So with that, I'm going to open the first public hearing, and this is an application that was continued to this evening from April 8, 2025. It's the application of Laura and Jack Boyes care of Lisa Mead, Mead Teller, and the Costa LLC. This is an application requesting a special permit for nonconformities. The applicant seeks all necessary permits to construct additions to the rear of the existing structure that extend the nonconforming lot coverage. And with that, may we hear from the applicant, counsel?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So my name is Ben Roberts, I'm an associate of Laura Costa, 30 Green Street, with me is Scott, and we're here on behalf of the board, Jack Boys, here with us, right? We're here for a special permit for nonconformities. It's just an overview of the property. So for background, the property is in the R2 and DCOD suburbs. We're seeking to get a one story mudroom and a two story addition at the rear. It was all removed, 20.6% of the walls and 248 square feet. So for historical backgrounds, this upgraded structure was constructed in 1720 according to the Sessors Cards for between 1775 to 1800, the district down to the source of this construction. So again, the proposal is to construct a one story mudroom addition and a two story addition of the kitchen wall. There's no changes to the front elevation and everything. So there are four existing nonconformities on the property. One of the first is for lot area, which is 5,986 square feet, where 10,000 square feet is required, frontage with 80.45 feet, where 90 feet is required, front yards back of 3.3 feet, where 25 is required, and lot coverage of 34.17 feet, where a maximum of 25% is allowed. That last one is the plan, not the new 24 tonight. We're going to increase that by 1.9% to 36.6%. If you recall, we were here last summer for a special permit for a similar application. We decided to just submit this as a new special permit application instead of a major modification because it was kind of the same process anyways. So back in the summer, we had approved 37.4%. So this is a little bit less of an increase compared to the last. So with that, I'll pass it off to Scott. We'll talk about the elevations and plans.
Thank you, Attorney Roberts. Well, good evening, everybody. Scott Brown, the architect for the project. So this is a very old house, and about 25 years ago, it was completely rehabbed. Before that, it was a two family. It's kind of hard to envision, looking at it today, what it was like when it was a two family. So although it is a very old house, I don't know where any of those old bones are, and a lot of the existing structure was, you know, reworked. So as Attorney Roberts just stated, we were before this board in August and last August. I think a majority of you sat on that application at the time. And that application had two one story additions. One store, one of those additions was located in the back right corner, and the other one story addition was located at the back left corner in the bottom of a mudroom. At the time, we were intending to work with the existing one story addition that's on the back of the house. And that one story addition was part of the rehab work that was done 25 years ago. So the application for you tonight does not have the single story addition in the back right corner. It does have the single story mudroom addition in the back left corner, which is essentially in the same shape as the application in in August, you'll see in a minute, but it does look a little different. The existing one story addition, we are completely removing, and we are replacing it with a two story addition that extends into the backyard by a foot. So, you know, in August, we did have a lot coverage, as Attorney Roberts said, of 37.4%. This application, although we are extending it into the backyard by a foot, the lot coverage is slightly smaller at, you know, 36.6%. So although we are extending it into the backyard, you know, what we are asking for is less in terms of lot coverage. Next slide, please. So this is our architectural site plan. It's just a little clearer to see than the plan from the surveyor. So the gray shaded area is the extent of our additions. I would, you know, approximately one third of that, the upper left hand corner, is a single story addition. The rest of it is going to be a two story addition. Next slide, please. So our existing photos, you know, on the top, in the middle, that's our front elevation as the house of the house, as you see it today. We're not proposing any work to the front elevation. Immediately to the right of that, that is a view from the front right corner. From this vantage point, we will not see any not see any of our additions on the back of the house. The only work that we're doing in this view, which you'll see in a few minutes, is we are modifying the windows in that bay that's in the back right corner. The top left corner of the sheet, this is the view from the front left corner of the house, almost on the Butters driveway. And, you know, from this viewpoint, you won't won't see the two story addition in the back, but you will see off to the left there, a little glimpse of our one story mudroom addition at the back left. On the bottom here, right in the middle, that's the one story addition that was added to this house 25 years ago. That's what we're proposing to remove in its entirety and replace it with a two story addition. Front left corner, that's the view from the back right. And you can see just to the left there, you know, that window bay that I just spoke of, that we're we're modifying those windows. And lastly, the photo in the bottom right corner, this is taken from the back left corner of the property, and this is looking towards what will be our single story mudroom addition, which is going to sort of be just beyond those trash cans at the sea in the foreground, and immediately beyond that will be our two story addition. Next slide, please. So the next four slides, these are our sort of posed and existing elevations on all four sheets. The existing elevation is at the top, proposed elevations are at the bottom. This is the front elevation of the house. We're not proposing any work to the front elevation. This is the right side elevation. So in the lower right hand corner, you'll see that bay that I spoke of, and that is the bay where we're actually modifying windows. So immediately behind those windows, we are modifying the kitchen, and we need to put a countertop there. So we're actually raising those windows slightly so that we can have a counter underneath those windows. And off to the right of that, lower right hand corner, that's our two story addition. It does have a low slope roof, so it's not to overlay on top of the existing roof. And also, we want to kind of avoid any any conflict with that existing dormer that's on the back of the house. Next slide, please. So I think we skipped over one there, Andy.
I agree.
Two, three. Yeah. Yeah. So this is, you know, kind of rear elevation of the house on the top. There is, that's our existing elevation on the top, immediately in the foreground, that's that one story addition that we're planning to remove. And immediately above that, there's a decorative arch top window. In some instances, I would advocate for reusing that window, but in this instance, that window is not original to the house and is a bit of a poor replica, and in my opinion, not really worthy of preservation. And on the bottom here, this is a proposed elevation, two story addition in the middle, one story addition off the mudroom addition in the lower right hand corner. And if some of you can remember, our proposal in August had a different different architectural approach, you know, was a little bit more, the additions we were doing, a little bit more decorative and distinct, you know, from the house. And well, that really didn't translate well to this two story proposal, so we pivoted. And the net result here is something that's a little quieter and more like, you know, more like the rest of the house. Next slide, please. Finally, coming full circle, this is the left side elevation, as you could see it in the driveway. You know, all of our work in this view is in the lower right hand corner, lower left hand corner, rather, with a one story addition in the foreground, two story addition in the back. In terms of materials here, we do have a standing seam metal roof above that mudroom addition. This is to match some of the other metal roof accents on the rest of the house. For the most part, with the exception of a couple of areas, we're proposing aluminum clad wood double hung windows, rot resistant materials that will be painted. You know, our clients recently went through a bunch of replacements of the exterior trim work here, and it's kind of surprising that like sort of 25 years ago, the stuff that we were using just didn't didn't last. So hoping to avoid, yeah, with these rot resistant materials. And then finally, our, you know, our siding is going to be a wood bevel clatter painted to match the existing. Next slide, please. And finally, you know, one of my favorite things to talk about, the DCOD calculation sheet, one of my favorite things to do. This sheet shows, you know, all of the areas in sort of pink or red that we are affecting, either removing in their entirety or covering up with an addition. And keep in mind, you know, 60% of these areas are part of that addition that was done less than 25 years ago. And next slide, please. So with that, in effect, Attorney Roberts, thank you.
Please, Scott. All right. So as the board knows, the agreement, a special permit, you're knocking forward, there must be a two part test that you passed. And the first question is whether the proposal is an addition of new nonconformity, which we do not. And then the second part is whether the proposed change will be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood when compared to the previous nonconforming structure. And we are confident that it's not. We think that size scaling, massing, and bottom are not detrimental. It's the same, I said deck, but the addition, we think that reasonable increase of only 348 days per unit living area. And again, we think that the lot coverage increase of 1.9% is reasonable as well. We think that's a service to the main structure. It's not this one in the street. We took great care not to disturb the main roof line, and we think that the windows deciding and trimming are complimentary as an extension of the block. So with that, I think that's getting. So just to compare again to the other houses and structures on both of the block, with this increase, the living area will be 1,130 square feet less than the largest residential structure on the block, which is 313. For the record, I'd like to correct something in my letter. I said it's 1,180 square feet less, 1,130 square feet less. Read the two numbers backwards and apologize. Next slide, please. And then similarly, we compared other residential units on other residential lots on the block. I think it's helpful to see. So what I did was I compared the first floor living area of residential units on the block and divided that over by the acreage to make an estimated lot coverage. So currently, our proposal, we are the seventh highest lot coverage on the block. The increase to move up one position to six. So right now, there's six lots that have more lot covers than us, and then with the proposal, there's five. So we think that we kind of see in the same relative location compared to other central lots on the block. And then just to show you some pictures of the block, that's the Grand Federal Street. Go through these. Here's looking at the street, 5 School Street, 2 School Street, 9 and 7 School Street, next door, 9 School Street again, 15, 17 School Street, 14 School Street across the street, 18 and 20 on the same side. You get the next slide, please. So this is the view from the backyard, looking across into back street. So that's our presentation. We've also received two letters of support from neighbors, one from Dick and Nancy Monahan of 4 School Street, and Rob and Shannon Rockford in 17 School Street. So that's our presentation. We request a special permit for nonconformities to increase the lot coverage. And that's the vision.
Very good. Okay. Thank you, Attorney Roberts and Scott. Thank you for the presentation. Anything further before we close the applicant presentation? Very good. All right. Closing that portion of the application, we'll go to public comment. Anyone in the room wish to speak in connection with this application, either for, against, or just because? Any show of hands, none? Do we see any hands online? Seeing none, I will close public comment and go to questions from the board. Anyone? Larry, please.
Has historical looked at this at all?
No, because it doesn't trigger the 25%.
Okay. See, you don't have to.
Exactly.
Any other questions?
I've got a couple like that. Oh, sorry. Do you want to go first? You go ahead. Good. There probably just points of clarification. The two story addition that's going to be put on the back of the house will still be 25 and a half feet away from the rear setback.
Yeah.
It's closer, but it's still within the required 25 feet. Okay. And when you came before us last year, it was actually two additions on either side that had a bigger footprint than what you're proposing now, and that's why the block coverage has dropped slightly here. Okay. That's all I have, just wanted to understand.
Okay. Any other questions?
I'll sit now. I'll sit, took care of mine.
Oh, okay. Very good. Well, I have a little question. The, you mentioned 348 more square feet. So I assume since the bigger addition there already has first floor, that's basically the square footage of the second floor plus the mudroom. Is that what that is?
Yes.
No, I don't have any questions. All right. Thank you, Mr. Swanton. I don't have any questions that weren't already addressed. So unless there's anything further, we'll close questions and go into deliberations. Who would like to start in just fleshing out the criteria and whether the applicant's proposal meets the legal requirements, the two-prong test?
I'll go.
Please.
First one, there is no new nonconformity. That's prong number one. Second prong is, you know, it's not more detrimental to the neighborhood. This is a beautiful home. Where the addition is, it will be difficult to see from anywhere, and I'm sure it'll be done nicely. So I can't, I cannot imagine this would be more detrimental to the neighborhood unless one of the neighbors in the back was, you know, just over the moon, that it was too big. But you don't have that. We don't have anyone coming to us saying that they have a problem. My concern when I first saw it was, you know, the lot coverage is going up, but thank you for pointing out, giving permission to go even bigger last year. So this is actually a reduction in lot coverage, and it's still within the setback. So I think with no new nonconformities and it not being more detrimental to the neighborhood, it does meet the criteria. And with that said, I could support the application.
Okay. Any other, well, sorry, any continued deliberation?
I'm just add to that, that, you know, I walked down the street quite a bit. It's, it's a larger lot, and then I try to imagine when I look back there, you know, if you'll be able to see this thing. I don't really, I kind of agree with my colleague here. This is somewhat invisible as far as impacting the look of an input unless you have to look behind it. And I think that's significant here. Normally, when you're intensifying a nonconformity, that's not good. But when it's done in this way, where it's not that many square feet, and it's, you can't tell from any public way, I think it's fine.
Very good. Anything further?
I would agree with these guys that I can I can support this for the reasons stated. I think, you know, it's in the back, as said, and we're actually going a little bit smaller from what was permitted last summer. So I am in support of this.
Excellent. Anything further? I'll just add that I, you know, I agree with my colleagues, and I do believe it meets our criteria. I also think that it's a thoughtful design, thoughtful attention, not surprising. You know, certainly, we've seen this team before us before, and it's, it's nice to continue to see this kind of attention to historic detail and allow it to coexist in our world today. So that's, that's not always an easy blend, but I appreciate it, so I can support it as well. Anything further deliberations? Closing deliberations, do we have a motion?
We'll make a motion to approve 11 School Street DNC. We'll make a motion to approve eleven school street, DNC, twenty-five dash eight.
Very good. Mr. Shannon's motion, do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Mr. Delisle's second, motion's made and seconded, calling the roll, Mr. Swanton. Yes, Mr. Shannon?
Yes.
Mr. Delisle?
Yes.
Mr. Ginton?
Yes.
And Rob Champagni, I vote yes, that's five in the affirmative, the eyes have it, motion carries, application's approved, thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Larry.
Yep, thanks very much. Um, going to the next application before us, this is the application of, uh, Jennifer Evan Smith, eight lowest street. Uh, this is a special permit for non-conformities. Um, I had given notice, I have to recuse myself for this application, um, due to, uh, legal representation conflict. So I will step out and give you the, uh, the helm on this one and then I'll just come back with opinions. All right. So we begin with, uh, hearing from the applicant, um, or their representative. Um, who do we have to, uh, who's ever presenting this, please come forward. Jennifer, we have you online, are you with us?
Yeah, I'm with you, can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
I, I don't know if you can see me, I don't, I didn't give, wasn't giving that.
It, it might be due to our Zoom settings though, um, just wanted to tie up on it, it's due to the Zoom setting setup of the webinar, uh, apologies, uh, but we do have your slides and I can flip through those if you'd like for the board.
Okay, awesome, thank you.
Uh, so feel free to give whatever presentation you'd like.
Okay, so my name's Jennifer Evans Smith and I am the future owner of eight lowest street. Um, and, uh, yeah, you can put the, the pot up there. Um, so eight lowest street is in the Anna Jakes neighborhood, we're really excited to live there and be able to walk to work at the hospital and the kids walk to school. We really like the larger lot and, um, we like where the original house is positioned on the lot as well as the back deck. Um, our, unfortunately, it's a small house, as you can see there, and so, uh, we wanted to expand it. Uh, advanced the original plan when we, uh, put the offer on the house was to make sort of a rambling branch and extend into the side yard, building by right. But we got concerned that it was going to look more like this because the ceilings are quite low, as is typical in a nineteen-sixties ranch. And we have very tall children, um, and so we are proposing a second-story addition. Um, that will, uh, continue the non-conforming front yard setback. As you can see, it's, uh, twenty point seven feet from the front and, uh, we want to continue that up. As well, there is some exacerbation of the front yard setback because our designer felt adding a front porch would sort of soften the look and improve. Um, the design of it. We also included the, the, uh, proposed attached two-car garage and driveway, however, we may or may not, um, be able to. Um. Sort of do that at first and that is going to be within the, uh, setback requirements. You can advance the slide. So this is the, um, interior structure, which is really keeping the original foundation, which is for both economic and environmental reasons. Um, because concrete can be a big expense as well as, uh, you know, create a lot of. Uh, impact. Uh, we kept the original structure very similar, keeping the staircase to the basement where it is, keeping the living room where it is, as well as the kitchen and dining room. And turning one of the bedrooms into an entryway to get to the proposed second floor. Again, the bathroom is remaining where it is and the other two rooms remain as they are. And then, um, we added additional bedrooms and bathrooms upstairs, just expanding the footprint. And so. This is, uh, what we proposed the house would look like. And, um, you can see it from the left side, again, we're sort of doubling the height of the house as well as from, uh, the right side. We tried to sort of keep in mind the, the neighborhood in general, which has a lot of small ranches like lowest, but also some two-story split levels, colonials and expanded capes. Um, and then this is the zoning matrix and you can see that, uh, again, we're asking about the front yard setback and that, that front porch did. Uh, sort of worsened the front setback and so I had the designer just mock-up. A different option if this was really important to the board where we didn't have that front porch. And then I guess the final point, point to make is, uh, we really like that, that tree that is in the front yard. I provides beautiful shade and, uh, it's just stunning, so there was a lot of debate or questions about whether or not we were going to keep the original driveway. Of course, if we're not building the garage, we, I think the house and the design functions just fine with the driveway where it is. If we do, or if we're able to create the garage, we are certainly open to removing the second driveway, but we would want to consult with an arborist because that driveway is so close to that tree. I'm just concerned that ripping it up might, um. Cause harm to that tree and, um. Yeah, but we're not, we're not opposed to removing the driveway. It is sort of nice to have a second driveway kit to kids to play in, but we don't feel strongly about that. Thank you so much.
All right, thank you. So the next part of the hearing is if anybody here, uh, would like to comment? Has anybody come here to talk about this? Yes, if you could just, uh.
Point six lowest street, uh, we haven't supported this post, uh, existing additions. We support it.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Would anybody else like to say anything? Uh, and there's no one else online, right? Okay, so we'll close the public comment period. And now we go to, um, questions from the board. Who would like to begin? Larry?
So I just have a question about the garage. It, it, it seems as if it's something you want to do, but you're not sure you're gonna do.
Correct, yeah.
And then if you do the garage, then you would end up with a true, two driveway situation? Or, or would you do a second driveway anyway regardless of whether you built it or not?
Uh, if we're not building the garage, we are not putting in a second driveway.
I'm just making sure what we improved here is. Uh, so, okay, um, and then the only non-conformity that you're worsening, you said was the porch. And you said there might have been an alternative, um, did we see the alternative?
Uh, I, I put a mock-up of, uh, all the way at the end without the porch. I did not.
Sure, yeah, okay.
Uh, I did not, uh, include drawings of that, um. Yeah.
Very good, thank you. Okay, who else would like to go next?
I'll go, I'm, I'm going to jump on that porch again, um. If you put the porch in, how, I can't tell from the drawing, how big is it? How much does it extend towards the front yard? Four feet?
It's five by eight.
Five feet eight?
Yeah, five foot by eight foot wide, five foot deep.
Okay, five foot deep, so the zoning matrix that was supplied with the, uh, application says that you'd have a front yard setback of twenty point seven feet. Which I think is the existing foundation, so if you dropped another five feet, you'd be down to fifteen feet, am I correct?
Correct, yes.
Okay, fifteen point seven, right?
Correct, yeah.
All right, um. And I, and I guess you're aware, I assume that the city commented that they don't like having two curb cuts on a street?
Uh, correct, I believe that the Department of Public Works said that because there's no curb to cut and no sidewalk, they don't feel strongly about having. A second driveway here, um.
Yeah, yeah, Andy, if you could.
Sure, if I could briefly, um, this is a comment I think that typically would come from the planning office or public services or both. Um, and, you know, it was a frequent conversation that I've seen in the city council when we talk about on-street parking, um, neighborhoods are very different around the city, of course. Uh, but one of the concerns there is typically trying to reduce curb cuts in general and not lose on-street parking and, um, not adversely impact the streets game, so to speak. Um, from appearances, so at the end of the day, one thing that might be a possibility here to put the board, the applicant, not details, but. Um, if the garage is constructed, for instance, with the new driveway, there could be a stipulation that people will curb cut or driveways removed. Um, that could be discussion, you know, point here. At the end of the day, uh, it may be more or less important on one project versus another, but we have seen before. There's at least one application I could follow down, which was, um, but very strong interest in making sure the on-street parking stayed the same, um, so. Again, just, uh, generals, generally speaking, we try not to have too many curb cuts along a segment of streets game and not more than one per lot unless necessary.
Just kind of a point of order, but the, the Department of Public Services say in this case that they really do not want to have two curb cuts?
They said that they preferred not to have two, but they would be willing to accept the second one of this, in this case, in context. Um, but they, yeah, best practice for recommendation, preference, uh, aligned with our office, which is generally speaking, to try to avoid two curb cuts for a property if it can be done.
Thank you. What else you got?
Um. So I, I, maybe this doesn't work, but you have the garage on the left side of the house, which, which forces you to build a second. Um, driveway. Did you consider putting the garage on the other side where the driveway is?
Yeah, we did.
Okay, it's two feet to the lot line, is that the reason?
Yeah, we only have nineteen feet to that side of the house to maintain that, um, ten-foot s- side setback.
So it's too skinny?
Yeah, and honestly, if we're, it's, uh, it's, uh, we just thought the flow would work. With the garage on the other side because there's so much, um, space over there.
Okay. Um, I, I have no other questions. Vice Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Shannon. Um, you took a while. Um, yeah, thank you, Mr. Vice Chairman, um, would you, could you sort of elaborate a little bit more on the garage? I think I understood from, um, prior question that, uh, that it's something that you'd like to do, but you maybe you might not do. I'm just trying to kind of, I, I, I want to drill down on that because I just want to make sure that we're, we have a set of plans in front of us that we can approve. Um, so if you wouldn't mind speaking to that.
Yes, so we want to do the two-car garage, but, um, in the sort of current, uh. Uncertainty of knowing how much the, uh, whole project will cost, if something from the project is going to go, it's going to be the two-car garage. So, um, and again, that part of the project doesn't require any, um, special permit per se. I just thought it should be included because that is our desire of what we'd like to do.
Yeah, I agree.
Yes.
Sorry, through the chair, uh, Andy Ford Director, planning and development, just, um, generally speaking, one of the things that the board member, uh, is probably getting at and just for the applicant benefit. Typically, when the decisions are issued, the board is trying to be clear and the applicant's, uh, record is clear, this is something we've become very thorough about in recent time. But to have a clear set of plans about what's being approved, especially in this case, if there's, uh, a desire for some flexibility to do one version versus another version, uh, if you will. And, um, just thinking about this usual manner, it could be, you know, contemplated approval that would allow one option versus another in terms of actual likely progress or not. But that might go to other stipulations or conditions in here, um, it's usually there is one set of plan that's being approved, uh, or one option that's, that's clear cut. And then if there's modifications, an applicant might come back or re-quit for that, uh, it may be, but, uh, the board put in this instance, if that's something that's of interest, um, you know. Possibly condition it to allow one thing to proceed versus another, but it is very important as an order to allow, point out, to have a consistent set of plans in its feet. It's, uh, referencing what is being approved and what the zoning administrator, then the building department would be verifying is complete at the time of the, uh, the bucket, the permit or the, uh, sign up of the work.
Yeah, this is, sorry.
Go ahead. No, no, you go ahead, thank you.
I was going to say, this is the plan, the plan is to build the, the two-story house and the garage and the front porch.
That, thank you, that.
Yeah.
I have.
So just to, I, I'm going to point this towards the planning work, planner is, are, are we here because of the porch specifically? So the garage does not need approval, does the second floor need approval?
The second floor, it needs approval and the, uh, front addition or entry needs approval.
Because of the front setback, correct. I just want to drill down really what, what are the points that we need to.
Correct, it's the front setback and the upward extension, if you will, and sort of forward with that entry, it is pretty typical to have entries and obviously there's the usual. Understanding that something in features like that are beneficial for breaking down a speed scale and whatnot, but it is an improvement further into the setback, it's got partly approval for it.
Yeah, okay, follow up, and if we approve it with the garage, we're approving the driveway, but then have to put a note in that the old driveway at least needs, the curb cut needs to go away. Whether the asphalt stays on their property, that's up to them. We're just worried about the curb cut.
Uh, well, that's what I was offering, I guess, for the board's consideration in discussion with the applicant, depending on his permit application. It's just that if you wanted to address the issue of, you know, two curb cuts or driveways on the property, meaning extra coverage and, you know, and give back your letters versus landscape area. Um, you could stipulate, if there's a concern, you could stipulate that the old driveway be removed, get the new one or the new garage, you can put in something of that nature, I guess, uh, that's of interest. And you can stipulate whether it's the curb cutting versus the driveway or both, there's some, you know, this kind of.
I mean, it's, it's a nice little project, but I want to do something comprehensive so they don't have to come back.
Agreed.
Right, so if I could try, what I hear you saying, Andy, is that we, we could prove the proposed plan with the garage. With the stipulation that if it's built that way, they need to remove a curb cut. Um, but that stipulation that they choose not to build the garage, they do not have to change the curb cut.
Correct, that's exactly what I was getting at, and my assumption there, unless basically something, my assumption, the board would include the removal of the tubular driveway that's on that side of the lot as well, that's a situation. Yeah.
And then we haven't really drilled down on whether it bothers and.
And that's.
Could have done during deliberations, or you could ask questions about it now?
Yeah.
Are there any other further questions from anyone?
I guess since we're.
Not quite delivering.
No, I was, I was going to ask another question.
Okay, go ahead.
Would the applicant consider removing the porch if that's what the board wanted to have you do?
Absolutely, yes.
Okay, just wanted to make sure that. Put some stipulations on it, that the porch is gone, driveways, your curb goes back. Thank you.
Are there any other questions from?
I have a couple other.
Go ahead.
Yeah, um, I, I just had a, uh, some questions about, uh, material choices because there are no notes on the, uh, on the. Elevation, so I was wondering if you could, um, let us know what you were planning in that regard.
Yeah, we were planning for, um, horizontal certainty, um. Siding material, um, and the double-hung six-over-one windows.
Okay, um. I think that, that's helpful.
Okay, uh, no other questions here. I, I personally do not have any questions that haven't already been asked by my colleagues. So that gets us to the next stage of the hearing, which is, um, builder deliberations where. We look at the two-prong test in this case and figure out whether this. Meets it or not, um, and any issues to come with it. Who would like to begin?
I'll, I'll go ahead and start.
Go ahead.
Uh, so we have no new non-conformities here, uh, we have the, the. Exacerbation of the front yard setback issue and the, um. The intent, I guess we're, we're going up in the, in that setback as well. Uh, I have no problem going up with respect to the, the structure, adding a second floor. Uh, I'm not inclined to support the, the porch going out five foot further into the, uh, front yard setback, taking it down to fifteen feet. That seems small relative to the twenty-five-foot setback, so. I'm okay with everything that you have here except for the, the front porch. I don't think that the, the project would be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. I think that the neighborhood, as the applicant noted, is, you know, there's mixed, mixed housing stock in the neighborhood, so I think that this will probably fit in just well. So that's, that's where I am. I can support this without a vote. Okay, who would like to go next?
I'll go. I guess I agree. And with the added stipulation if the garage goes in, the curb cut.
Yeah.
Gets restored on the, the other side. Yeah, I guess as well, I, I've got some concerns with extending the front yard setback, so I'd like to see that porch removed as well. I think we, I know we don't set precedents, but we've had one within the last couple of months where we did the same. You know, the porch.
We've been consistent.
We've, we've been consistent on. On front yard porches. There is a way to put a landing. Right? It only gets, it only counts if it has a roof on it. That might be another thing you could consider is you could put a landing. With no roof. It doesn't break up the front of the house. It doesn't do what I think architects want it to do. Anyways, with that said, I can support it with the, with the porch removed so that the setback isn't changed. And with that curb restored.
Okay. The Juntah?
I, I support the second floor, but I do agree with my colleagues here that they. Port should, should be, just to say it consistently.
Okay.
And for myself, could you put up that last picture with, one without porch? I'm very glad this was included by the applicant in the plan here. I actually think it breaks up the front pretty well. And it already has a little stoop on it, if you will.
Yeah, it's got the landing.
Something's there. Couple of steps on there. So I mean, I agree with my colleagues. I think it's. This house is already quite close to the road for the, compared to the zoning and going another. He is a lot. So. I think what we're hearing is unanimous here that we want to do this and I just want to say the applicant, at this point, when we, we go to a motion, we voted, we're done. But you've already said you'd be okay with the, without the porch. That's what's about to happen here. I assume you're.
Yeah, I, I'm, I, I guess I just was wondering, can it be approved without the porch today or did I need to? And with, without the porch and with the stipulation that the driveway may remain, but the curb, only one curb cut per lot.
Right, right. So you would have to, if you put the other, if you were able to build everything you want here and put the garage in. And put a driveway over there, you'd have to at least put the curb back on the other side. You could leave the asphalt in, but. You know.
Yeah.
Right, and, and the board would be, you know, the board, but it sounds like the board would be conditioning it tonight as opposed to. To be needed for that purpose.
I'm sorry, you cut out. I couldn't hear that.
It sounded as if you were wondering whether it continues to be necessary. I think the board is contemplating approval with conditions tonight to accommodate those, that scenario.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I was just double checking since you're not in the room and just to make sure, you know, it's about to, that's about to down here. So I, I need a motion.
Before we do the motion, yeah, we just check with the planning director. There's a note in here that the city solicitor was supposed to tell us we can do this?
Yes, I would proceed.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure we weren't stepping on someone's.
We should have that on the record.
Um, one other point, though, I think the Department of Public Works also wanted it to be stipulated by the board that the new tree went to the left of the new driveway as well.
It's a special condition. We can read that into the record.
Okay.
I didn't think there was a tree or sidewalk.
Yeah, if I could perhaps, just to clarify, because of proximity here and the placement of the tree, and this is a conversation we're actually having a little bit further, more depth discussion. Choices right now. The distinction between trees that are actually in the public driveway or true street trees versus street trees that are along the right-of-way line, the property line there, but interiors the lot. And therefore may appear like street trees and function in some ways like street trees, but are actually on private property. So in some cases, if there's a tree that's of importance of some nature, it may be important or to call out what that tree is. To clarify, it's going to go into location in some way, if it's not shown that way in the plan. Or in some cases to stipulate that that tree or landscaping be preserved. In the case of a planning board hearing last week. They conditioned a tree, a tree in landscaping that was in the front yard setback to be maintained in association with that permit going forward. So that not only was the architecture of the home being approved at the time, but landscaping, their base of street was to be preserved in that way. The trees, the, the trees is what they're concerned with. So here, in addition to anything else that might be called out here, I just wanted to know, because it is something that isn't always picked up and indistinctly is. This tree is actually, we're looking at one that's on private property, but it functions in some ways aesthetically like a tree tree, so it may be important, not so much to. A true street tree that in the sense of that, I think it was subsequently referred to. It's not one that's being planted on or placing a street tree in the right way, but rather it's a tree that's along the frontage and is important to the neighborhood for the same reasons. But may need to be treated in terms of a plan or a condition in the permit, rather than having the applicant plant a tree in the public. Have to clarify.
So we're asking them to plant the tree on their property?
In this case, correct, and to maintain that tree.
Can we do that?
Yes, yeah, that, yeah, these are, I should note, planning boards more typically deals in things like this, but they do periodically come up, less frequently, I would say, with the ZBA. Normally, it's usually architecture that we're talking about, but there is sometimes.
And we, and we're not going to tell them what kind of tree?
Here, we only, generally speaking, will defer to the Department of Public Services, but to the extent that they have specified either a tree species or caliber. So we in the office, we aren't, you know, particular in that, so to speak. We typically defer strictly to the tree warden who's commenting for this stuff on here. We commented, but in this case, Public Services, we're, we're defer to them on what would make sense here. Sometimes we're trying to make sure it's understood as we work with Public Services most, sometimes they might be commenting on a tree, but it's important for them and for us to look at the plan here to recognize whether that's truly a. A true street tree, I mean legally a street tree that is over the city, you know, versus one that's on private property, but has to be maintained because of its appearance or is relevant in some way. In some cases, landscaping is shown on a plan like this as background information and it's not necessarily needed to be called out in some way. And so there's a sort of, you know, pieces of information available for its consideration, but where it's important, it's, it's sometimes necessary to call out a plan or a condition that makes it clear what's happening.
And this particular tree condition has been described to the applicant?
Yes, I believe, Jennifer, you're aware of this condition in the Public Services input.
Yeah, that, yeah, when they told me that they were. They would prefer one curb cut, but were fine with two driveways, they said because it's a substantial rehab, we need to plant another tree and they requested that it be. You know, where it makes sense to be, which is in that larger side yard.
Okay. All right. So I think we're to the point of looking for a motion. Do you have another question?
No more questions.
I'm just a little bit, a little bewildered that we're the city and we're telling somebody they need to plant a tree on their own private property, would it, they don't want it to.
Well, that, that, yeah, that's, this is essentially the same negotiation, if you will, process where you're granting relief under zoning. You have to find that things are, you know, not a detriment to the neighborhood, right? And, you know, consists with the character and whatnot. So in this case, there are, as, well, maybe not as frequent that we talk about these things. There are instances in which the driveway curb cut or landscaping or fencing, you know, things like that are dealt with, so it is within your purview. We sometimes see those things conditioned more explicitly or in a particular way. There was another project a few months back, but we had a condition in dealing with. If the tree doesn't survive based on some work, this is the replacement trees that will be placed in there based on feedback from Public Services. And so there is, just as a reminder for board members, there is also a very particular stipulation in your report, so when you're dealing with, you have an additional residential unit. Or a substantial improvement to a structure to improve the sidewalks and trees along the frontage if there's something is, is, is out of date, if you will, on that front.
But they don't have a sidewalk. There are no trees in question.
Correct, correct. And to, to your exact point, this is, this great one. So this is exactly the confusion that I think was possible to be saw in this particular application last week. For title board services was here we see perhaps fear here, confound, right? This is not actually in the right-of-way, this tree. It may be important and Public Services may have picked up on that saying, all right, there's a tree there and sort of conceptualizing that as a street tree because it's so close. But the important part we were trying to know was the fact that this isn't actually in the right-of-way, it's on private property. The board still has the authority to look at that and see whether that's important in one way or another, the application and relief being requested. But to your point and maybe the confusion here is Public Services is not looking at it under that particular provision of the zoning. They were looking at it thinking it would, might trigger that, they're just, we always have to look more for feedback from them because the project is contributing, we have to ask for feedback. They give us the feedback. The confusion was that they're thinking of it as a street tree that's being replaced. Not recognizing that it's actually over the lot line, it's therefore a private tree. It's the board, you know, decision to decide the applicant on that, somebody to address one or another. But it isn't that Public Services needs to comment under that particular provision here where it isn't a street tree or sidewalk in the right-of-way. That's where it's precisely where the confusion was. It may be still a usable feedback in some way, you know, for you or, you know, and work with the applicant, but it isn't following that provision of the ordinance. Because it is not, to your point, a true, you know, right-of-way street tree or.
If I could ask a follow-up question, I mean, usually. It's not this situation. A DPS says they need a sidewalk improvement or a tree and we kind of put it into our thing and say, yep, you have to do that. Is this one more optional for us?
This, that's exactly right.
The other.
We do require trees sometimes. We've, we've had them, put them in for a screening. You know, when a two-story goes in, sometimes we say, put in some abreviations or something.
And you could think of this in screening in a way, because this house is going a lot.
Yeah.
And it's closer to the road than it should be.
It's just an odd one.
It's an odd one. My question, my question to the vice chair, because I haven't been able to refer it to you as the vice chair yet. Is that could we vote on the tree separately first and then the rest of the project second?
We could certainly deliberate on the tree. Why don't we do it that way? And see where we are on the tree.
Okay.
And whether or not we want to include it in the, in the amendment. You all hope. So you have some concern there, apparently.
Yeah, telling a private landowner that they have to plant a tree on private property. It'd be different if we talked about the first fourth quarter of their house, there was a sidewalk. Trees and blah, 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 but this is not the case.
How, how do you other thoughts?
I mean, since the applicant said they seem okay with it, I'm a little okay with it. The, the only thing I don't like is we haven't defined what a tree is. I mean, I, I know, but I mean, you, you can come along and say, I want a twenty-five-foot oak and, you know, it costs nine thousand dollars. That, that, I think that would not be kind.
We never do. Stipulate a tree.
Okay.
I mean, I, I didn't think the tree was up for debate, I guess, which is why I, I was bringing it up because that's what I was. Told by.
Yeah. If I could, again, just to clarify and remind to Ken's other question, it, it is more of an optional consideration of the board here in the context of a relief being granted from zoning and the setbacks or whatnot. Not because of that provision of the ordinance, the, we do run it for Public Services comment as required by the ordinance, by the, the permitting process. So that the board is aware, the applicant can work out in an application like this, whether or not a street tree or sidewalk improvement need to be upgraded. Here, there was an unfortunate, I think, confusion or misunderstanding about what is, what is happening here with this one between the, the staff, part of the Public Services representative or. Whether this is actually a true street tree. So again, this is not, it's not something that's necessary physically because of the other requirements proposed in the plan. But it may be something of interest and that's up to the board, whether or not entirely up to the board, whether or not to stipulate that. Or whether or not somebody in particular points here versus other applications where you might be just looking at the architect or and the driveways.
So. Would someone else like to comment? Mr. Juntah is not comfortable.
Yeah, I'm inclined to agree with.
All right, let's go on to.
And I must add to that that this person already has a huge, beautiful tree. So it's not like there's no trees there.
Right, yeah, it's not Arizona.
So if you don't mind, dear applicant, if you're referring to the lead requirement for a tree.
Okay.
Okay, all right.
If you want to plant a tree on your own, go ahead.
It's your.
Okay.
You'll be under no penalty. Would somebody like to make a motion now?
I'll make a motion to approve a lower street, DMC twenty-five dash seven, with the two following conditions. If the garage is installed, the second driveway's curb will be reinstalled. And the original driveway, I'm sorry. Well said. The porch, the front porch will not be part of the project. It'll be the drawing, the last drawing that we had. The fourteen, fourteen.
Okay, it's been moved. Would somebody like to second it? Is there any additional discussion? All right. Go down to the table here, Mr. Shagden?
Yes.
Mr. Delaw?
Yes.
Mr. Juntah?
Yeah.
And I vote yes. It is, you have all four votes. You needed four and you got all four. So it is.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Take care.
We'll give you the written condition shortly.
Good luck with your project.
Oh, thank you.
All learned. New ground we had to.
Excellent.
Trees.
We don't have a tree.
Okay, thank you. Pick it up where we left off. This is the application for Ten Johnson Street, M R E G LLC, Kevin Childs. This is an application for a special permit for non-conformities to construct an upward extension of the rear yard set, I'm sorry. It is an upward extension of the rear yard setback to accommodate the construction of the dorm. May we hear from the.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Members of the board, Attorney Robert Peterson, three fifteen Main Street, Wilmington, for the applicant, M R V G LLC. With me this evening is Kevin Childs, the manager of M R E G LLC. No audio presentation is in, Mr. Chairman, but I'm prepared to address it if those pops up on the screen.
Sure, sure. And I apologize, I have the drawings that were submitted, so if you'd like any particular just to die, otherwise I'll just pull up, but that's, that's fine.
This is a request to extend vertically a non-conformity on the premises in the floor. So yeah, setback, if you look at the zoning matrix that you submitted, there were only two non-conformities, the house lacks the required frontage. And every block, it lacks to be. The side yard setback. It's twenty-three feet, where twenty-five feet is required. Also lacks the required on-street parking and zero spaces provided, but Mr. Childs has indicated to me that he does plan on applying the two on-street parking spots. The, as the plans show, if we can go back to the house plans, Mr. Chairman. Oh, it's actually, we can go back to the house plans for a second. The purpose of the application is to add dormers either side of the property. The dormers are actually in full conformity with the side yard setbacks, even though the roof itself is twenty-three feet from the side yard setback. The dormers will be twenty-six feet from the second setback. What Mr. Childs plans on doing is putting a roof beam in the dwelling. As part of the presentation, I think we submitted a picture of the attic. It's the same fashion that we use for the historical commission. Not sure it's clear in the presentation, so we want to pass that. It's very helpful. There's no carrying beam on the roof racks of this dwelling. Mr. Childs plans on putting a beam in the attic of the dwelling, which is going to raise the ceiling of the roof height of the dwelling seventeen feet, one inch. That basically, I'm sorry, so seventeen inches. It's actually a big raise. I probably won't be standing here, gentlemen, and that would. Ceiling height for the matrix is going from. Twenty-eight feet, eight inches to thirty feet, one inch. We did appear, still before the historical commission, they waived the demolition delay. Mr. Childs presented plans. The house is currently sided with vinyl siding, minds of taking all the vinyl off. And putting cedar impressions and the color of the house will be new. That basically is, is the gist of the application. There's no increase in any current non-conformities. In the position of the applicant, the granting of this special permit would not be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the current use of the. House is currently vacant. Improvements proposed by Mr. Childs will actually increase the value of the property and increase. The looks of the property and everything will benefit the neighborhood in general. Will benefit the neighborhood in general.
Very good. Um, anything further before we close presentation?
No, Mr. Chairman.
Very good. Thank you, counsel. Um, so we will close presentation, uh, at our public hearing and go to public comment. Anyone in the room wish to be heard on this application? Seeing no hands. Anyone online, you know? All right. Can't pay any hands if there's no people or bodies.
Was the neighbor at the commission hearing, but he was in.
Okay, great, great. Um, seeing no hands in the room or online, we'll then close public comment, go to questions from the board. Anyone have any questions? Yes.
I'll start. So the, the plan is, are you taking the roof, you're taking the roof to put a new beam in, but then you're putting dormers on it to create a livable space in the attic. Is that the end game?
Correct. 400, I, I should have mentioned that, Mr. Juntz, I apologize. 480 square feet. The livable space in that third floor area can't exceed 500 square feet. Uh, there's currently three bedrooms on the second floor. Uh, in order to reconfigure the stairway because the renovations, uh, has to be reconfigured to meet current code. So the number of bedrooms on the second floor will be reduced from three to two. Uh, and the additional living space will be added to the third. So there's no increase in, in bedrooms. Thank you. And I apologize, should have mentioned.
Any other questions?
And did you go to historical for, was it for a roof line change? Is that what the?
Oh, correct.
And is that, did that relate just to the dormers or to the height as well as the dormers?
Related to.
Okay.
Was requiring. It's just the height.
It wasn't just the height, it's the dormers.
We were okay, we could, we could put dormers in as, as long as we have the setback.
Right, yeah.
Any other question?
I just have one on the butter. I think you mentioned you had one positive feedback from the butter.
I spoke of all the butters, one came up on his own. And she ended up going to a house, houses and district here. So it's been, uh, vacant for now about two years and one of the biggest was concerned. Demo delay and the gear trying to get two or three.
I have a question, I'm just trying to understand your picture here. So right now you have the wrappers come up and there's, there's no ridge bore or ridge beamer or anything. So, so are you jacking up the wrappers? What are you doing?
So what will happen is we'll remove the whole.
Okay.
Uh, we'll put walls up and we'll go up to which.
Like little knee walls and then you're.
Yeah, the beading wall will be in on 18 inches on the short side of the house. And on the dorm of gable inside house, we come back, it's 3 feet, six inches. So we can accommodate that and we'll be put together.
I see, and then you're putting new wrappers up to a higher.
Okay. We'll put a beam up and we'll get to the 17 inches.
Okay, I get it. So this is an interesting picture, but this is history. All right, I have no other questions, thank you. Good, anything further? I, I don't have any other questions either that haven't already been answered. Uh, so I will close, um, questions from the board and go into deliberations. Again, we're deliberating the criteria for a special permit.
Can I ask one question before we get into that? There was a mention in that presentation.
Oh, uh, I saw it was parking, was there off-site parking? Someone, I believe, Mr. I said you had secured, um, it's both with these off, off-site parking.
Yeah, so there's no car park, currently there's no parking on site. And they were pretty happy about, we were willing to add two parking spaces and spoke to John Perry. I was in favor of that as well, as long as we don't touch his street five years he's at.
Currently, well, in the past, people had just parked on the street. Now you're going to create some off-street parking.
Two tandem spikes. If you can bring up that screen.
Okay, so everything, the city's happy and the neighbors. Thank you.
Okay. Let's see, getting back, uh, so, um, there are no further questions having closed questions from the board. We'll, uh, wait, yeah, we're going into deliberations and we're in the criteria for a special permit for nonconformity. I'll start. Please. Well, there's a two-pronged criteria. One is, are, are there any new nonconformities? There are none. The second is, is it substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than its current pre-existing nonconforming state? It's a 17 inch increase in a roof line. And unlike some applications, nothing is, there, there are no, nothing's becoming more nothing. Everything's within the current footprint. Historic commissions already approved it. Um, I think it's pretty minimal. And therefore, I can support it. Anyone else?
I'll, I'll just agree.
If there are no further deliberations, I, I can say I, I agree as well.
Yeah.
Um, all right. There are no further deliberations, we'll close deliberations and, uh, do we have a motion?
I'll make the motion to approve the application for 10 Johnson Street.
Thank you, Mr. Delisle's motion, do we have a second? Second, uh, Mr. Kinta calling the role on the motion in second. Mr. Slon, yes, Shannon?
Yes.
Mr. Delisle?
Yes.
Mr. Ginta?
Yes.
Can I go, yes, it's five in the affirmative, I have a motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Jim. Thank you. Okay. All right, moving on to our, um, next application. This is the application of Tom Murdy, nine and a half Harrison Street. Uh, the applicant seeks a variance to construct a shed within the required rear yard setback. May we hear from the applicant, Mr. Mr. Murdy?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and good evening, members of the board. Uh, so my name is Tom Murdy, the owner and resident, uh, Harrison Street here, my wife, Tanya Murdy. Evening, I'm quite dragged here for her birthday. So. Hi, Harrison Street, so you can see a picture here of our existing lot. Um, pretty irregular, a lot shape. We're proposing building a new accessory structure, a shed on our property, which is 16 by 14 foot. I call it 14 foot nine to the P. Uh, we're proposing approaching within the rear and side yard setbacks. Side yard setbacks. And six foot, we're posing approaching four foot on each, um, to get that shed in the corner of the lot. Step, lower right in corner, the red is the proposed. Um, where the black would be containing the six foot setback. That is the lower, uh, part of the property. So, you know, we're proposing that. Requesting a variance for the setback. And we're on the board to, 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 to provide the grant of the variance, um, for the following reasons. Um, and hardship, so hardship due to the lot shape and size. You can see it's very regular, narrow dimensions. Um, and then the hardship with the, for certain with the shed being in close proximity to the existing dwelling. We were to maintain those setbacks with the soil conditions that we have. Very permeable, uh, sandy silt. Uh, we have a field stone foundation. And it is very susceptible to water and heavy rain events. We don't want to degrade that condition. So moving that to the lower part, the, the lot will help with that drainage and prevent any, um, additional water that enters our basement. Um, and then again, our unique conditions for our lot is land lots. You can see a very irregular shape. Interesting point, the, the front of the house used to be. We set that water streets, there's an alley there, so. You know, so we can locate that in the other, any other part of the yard. We took that corner for that reason. Those other be any detriment to the public good. But generally modest, discreet, visually consistent with the surrounding structures. Finish the exterior with clapboards or cedar shakes, um, matching the existing structure which has cedar shakes. Not going to obstruct any views, create noise or. Neighborhood, um, not interfere with any neighboring properties, public driveways. We think this will actually enhance the functionality aesthetics of our property. Uh, and that's reaching the, the neighborhood and surrounding community. Uh, we, we don't feel this contract, the intent, the intent of the zoning bylaws. Relation that maintain adequate spacing between structure, safety, privacy and visual relief. This proposal maintains sufficient separation from neighboring dwellings and ensure that they be addressed and access around the earth. Um, in the spirit of the bylaws respect, that the victims would not, uh, derogate from this for 10. Might specific, demonstrable hardship, minimal and non-basically nature of the request. Yes, even public detriment, we ask the board. For it to be placed within the rear and side setbacks. We also have community support. While we have, like, support from both of the rear and side. We have other supporting of the community of Harrison Street. Well, I entered the, uh, expanded. System of the support.
Very good. Um, if that's it, uh, we'll close that for now and we'll, we may have some questions. Thank you. Um, thank you both. Okay, closing the presentation portion, go to our ever waiting audience in the room. Anyone wishes to, uh, speak in connection with the application, just one hand at a time, please. Don't rush the podium, yes, sir.
Brian, Brian Dixon, 11 Harrison Street, I'm in favor of this project.
Very good, thank you, Mr. Dixon. Anyone else? Anyone online, still no one? No one's logged on. It's riveting TV. I don't know what we're competing against, but it's crazy. All right, um, no further comments. Um, I'll close public comment, go to questions from the board. Mr. Ginta.
Is, is, is this going to be put on a, 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 a.
Well, is it going to be. Proposing, uh, woven geoprint and six inches of fresh stones, recorded stone on P T sleepers.
Okay. Wood and then let's allow us for a front there.
Yep.
Thank you.
Any other questions? I'll go next. Is there a fence around your yard?
There currently is a fence around the, the rear property line and the property line to the, the top of the page here.
Okay, so this would be so close to the rear property line fence, you wouldn't be able to walk behind it.
The, the setback, uh, see, that's kind of where that black line is. So we don't have. So we don't have to be on the corner of box.
I'd have to turn side. That must be okay.
Hey, if you go to the, the Muni map. You see how the, there we go. So our fence line, you can kind of make it out there in the, the bottom center of the beach, kind of cuts into the rear property line there. So we'll take that down. Um, so there would be access behind it, but we're proposing to maintain two foot of the property line so we could get a skinnier gap at the side.
Would you consider moving it back to the six foot? Or is, I mean, you.
So.
You're locked in pretty tight on the.
We're locked, yeah, we're locked in because. Now we, we'll be right against the. Start to cover the nose, um, in the rear of the house. Again, with the soil conditions, our water we already get, want to do anything, reset the shed there. Also worried about snowdrifts with the two structures that is together.
And how about the other corner of the lot, top right? Is there a reason it couldn't go up there? That, that looks like a bigger chunk of land. I'm just trying to find a way that you're not jammed up against, two feet against the lot line. Even though most of the places in the South End are like.
Yeah.
I, I, I can't throw up stones, my, my shed's on the.
Yeah.
But it was put there in the 1800s, like. Before someone knew where the lot lines were. I mean, the top right, you wouldn't be able to fit it up there and, and stay six feet away from everything?
Top right, um, that soil area actually started to become some sinkholes there. Last winter. He ties it so it's very soft right there.
And I gotta think, putting it there in the six foot setback, you now could cut the yard. Right now we have a nice, you know, what we have for a little, it's only 5,300 square foot lot. Um, so we have a nice L of the, you know, the kids are back there playing in. Shed, that part of the. We're, we're reduced the usability of the, of the equipment. Literally, I.
Okay.
I'll go next.
I'll next, please.
I'll go next, um. You already have a shed up on the top left there, how large is that shed?
The existing shed?
Yeah.
Um, eight by eight, very six square feet.
Eight by eight. And this new proposed one is. 16 by 14.
You know, my colleague was asking, why not put it closer to the house? Have you considered putting it against the house? And I, I know you said drainage, but you could have, rather than a roof like this, you could have a roof that just took the water away from the building completely. You know what I mean? And, and you could deal with the drainage issue by having it go away from, take. If you put the shed against the house and had a sloped roof that went highest at the house and went down, it would take all the water off and, and take it way away from the house.
Yeah, right now they're being detached, I think, you know. Uh, we didn't trigger any historic review or.
I guess, Eddie, do you know, if you attach a shed to a house, does that trigger historic review?
Uh, I don't know what the proportion is, it would be altered here, I'm going to guess not, based on just, you know, initial lights of what we're seeing here in that context. That, that you're trying to adjust the setback based on what line of the larger structure is typically allowed.
I mean, it sounds like it is an option.
Uh, yeah, I'll limit it to that. You know, it certainly seems from a structural perspective, it's the option, um, based on, um, you know, part of you.
I understand.
By not being the same setback needed or need needed.
I understand, it just doesn't trigger a variance when it's.
Right.
More than six feet away from the baseline.
Right, because it's larger in size and a little small accessories.
Significant increase in the scope of the.
I'm sorry, because you're.
So that'd be a significant increase in the. Addition to the house, standard of structure of ours.
Actually, when you, I mean, you want to, you could, wouldn't have to touch the house, you could just have a roof come up to catch the water coming out of the house and take it away. So you, you.
Yeah, it's just we have, it's all windows in the, the rear and everything. On the, try to maintain the existing look of our. So, uh, some utility.
16 by 14 is a, I mean, it's almost a garage and it's a pretty big shed.
Yes. Do you.
Have a what?
And a gardener.
We, 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 uh, we redid the house in 2016, we had gutted it and we kept several holes, footprint of it. Unfortunately, with the house from the 2040s, there's no storage. So we have zero storage in our basement and it's not so much far that it's not a place that we can actually afford to store anything due to like mold. So.
Lots of hobbies, two boys, bikes, recreational lobster man, you know, those traps, I'm sure the neighbors will see him along.
All right, okay. Get from my questions, I think. Any other questions? Okay, I will close questions from the board and go into deliberations. And of course, uh, with this one, we are deliberating the criteria for a variance. Would like to start.
Please, sorry, um, I, I actually, I support this and I'm, I'm just looking, they have a an unusual house like most people in the South End. An unusual house like most people in the South End and they have a little bit of a yard. That's sort of all together there, that all shaped. And it appears that that shed really to keep their yard intact or, you know, outside, outside activities. Needs to get tucked into that back left corner. Um, I don't feel like they have a lot of options. It's just a very small lot. Regular shape, so it's not ideal. And as long as the neighbors are in support of letters. I'm okay with it.
Okay, any other deliberations?
Yeah, I'd like to make one, um. I, I have a hard time with that logic because the South, I, I live in the South End as well. It's a very tight neighborhood. And if you said, you know, if somebody doesn't have another room, we'll give them a variance and nobody objects. And then we'd have a, we'd have. A line out the door for variances. That's a pretty low criteria. And one of the criterias is an odd shaped lot. And yes, this is an odd shaped lot, but. That's on the street side. The back is more normal than most. I mean, it's like almost a rectangle back. So I don't see the lot. I mean, to me. This is somebody who wants to put a very large shed. Very close to a property. Um, in a neighborhood that's already very overbuilt, um. I know we don't set precedences when we do things, but. If the hurdle is, if your neighbors are okay, you know, and you don't have much room, we'll let you. Have a variance. I, I think that is very hard at this neighborhood. I, I, I don't see the rationale for a variance here. I lived here, I built the thing walls through the house. I might lose a window, but. I wanted that largest shed. I think there are all terms here. Um, so anyway, I can't.
Any other deliberation?
Um, yeah, I'll. Um, I would, I would probably even take it a step further than Ken and say that. Here for variance, we're, we're totally considering a legal standard. That has criteria that are set forth and it's not sort of. The same as special permit or non-conformities where we have the ability to. Take into consideration, you know, input from the neighbors. I think with the variance, we have to meet certain threshold. That's. What we have to do based on the fact. Um, and for me, I think. I don't think the circumstance, so we have, you know, there's four criteria. Ten each, six. C, there are four criteria. Uh. The conditions and the circumstances are unique to the applicant's lot, structure or building and do not apply to the neighboring land structures or buildings in the same district. So that's the first criterion. I think that, that. This one doesn't pass the test for me because I think that having a small lot. Is not unique. To the South End. There are many, many, many lots that are small and many, many, many. Residents that could come in for variance based on that. Um. So I, I think I'm having a real problem with this one, so.
Um, any other? I'll just give my two cents that, you know. I think what you're hearing is there's a big difference in, between a variance and a special permit. Variance is a big hurdle. And we struggle giving variances out. If they don't meet these criteria, and I think the first bullet. Uh, was just mentioned is a tough one. Conditions and circumstances are unique. For that lot, structure of building, I mean, it, it, it's not that unique. Um. I, I would guess most of the properties in the South End have that same uniqueness, if you will. Um, so it's tough. And I think, I think also you're asking a lot to put such a large structure so close to the lot line. You could shrink it a little bit, scoot it over to one side a little bit, probably get within that six feet. And I think that's what makes it even harder for us is that. You're asking for a lot, lot of relief or something that, that I don't think the conditions are there for variance. Would be much easier if this was just a special permit, as Ken mentioned, if it was just the building slammed up against.
Can I leave that as a question? So did we apply for the wrong?
No, you, you applied for. Circumstances you're requesting. Because you're so close to the lot line, it's a variance. If you went back to the six feet, I think you could actually build it by right. You, you went to a building that was six feet away from the lot line. You could, you could just get a building permit. You wouldn't have to come before a board. Uh, so with that said, I would have a hard time.
I appreciate it as well. I appreciate that. I, um, I'll just add my thoughts. I, I find myself that I'm certainly. Not in disagreement with what appears to be the majority of my colleagues and I too sort of. Respect the rule of, you know, the legal criteria and I've been. Doing this a little while as well and also understand that life is. Um, you know, kind of a, a fluid and malleable type of a thing that doesn't always conveniently fall into those boxes. Yet. Our board, we're with respect to variances, it's the highest bar, so we're a bit beholden to that criteria, though. I find myself, you know, understanding this application. I don't live in the South End, but that doesn't, I certainly. Understand the South End, uh, and I respect my colleagues who do, uh, but my alignment is more with Mr. Ginta. You know, I can. Probably see my way, uh, through to supporting it, but it appears that numerically, as I'm sure you've heard. Um, that, uh, alone, even in the event that Mr. Ginta and I were to support it, uh, it falls, uh. Significantly short of carrying the day for the evening. So we always, as a courtesy to any applicant before us, rather than have and host a vote. Um, that could be a negative vote because the, the other technical feature of that is that. If you were to, um, have your application as is, um. Receive a, a vote here and it doesn't succeed, you could be barred, um, for, from reapplying for up to two years. Unless you made a material substantial change. We wouldn't want to do that to anyone. We don't like to practice someone by ambush. So. I want to have that conversation out loud, uh, because obviously you can, you know, you can read the tea leaves. Uh, we want to give you the opportunity if you so choose to take a step back and come back before us and maybe give, uh, you know, maybe some additional. Creative thought to how else this might go without the, you know, without running into this. Often locked door in the sort of. Virtual legal construct that we're just duty bound to have to adhere to when it comes to variances. It, it's the highest, toughest bar. Um, and, uh, you know, I, I take note that there's no objection from neighbors. That carries a lot away with me, but. Uh, as you can hear, it's, it doesn't seem to, um, it's, it's not going to be successful based on the numbers we've just heard, so we have to pay attention to that too. Um, what are your thoughts on, on, do you, would you want to, to get a continuance and come back? Um, so we could also offer, if you'd like, uh, further discussion.
Yeah, some planning and development, a lot of your ministry. Obviously, couldn't think of the board, but, uh, understanding the feedback tonight, talk a little more about, you know, other things that vary in work, where you're trying to publish. Yeah, that great where you circle back.
Yeah, and this way you're not coming back before us with, you know, hey, what about this? Or you, or you may find you don't even need to come back. Right, there are some options and I, you know, I, I think, um, you know, we've, we've certainly, we've heard the options, um. You know, Mr. Swanton had pointed out one, I believe, Mr. Swanton and Mr. Delisle, both. That there's, you know, there's a no relief needed option or a different relief that isn't variance. So, uh, with that, maybe we'll, do you want to continue this as a place owner?
Excited. Do you think, uh, I guess. What more things about the date for continuance? Did you, did you think it just a week or two time frame would be here? How long do you think you might need on your. We don't have a meeting for another month.
Right, exactly. That, that's true, sorry. So I would say, I would say let's plan for the next meeting, which is. One month from, uh, today. So it would be the, you know, the second meeting in, uh, May. Whenever that is, uh, but happy to put you on that docket and then just sort of work backwards from that date.
Yep.
Gives you plenty of runway. Um, we certainly appreciate your patience this evening and, and sir you as well for coming in and commenting. Um, but, uh, that's typically what we like to do so that nobody gets an unexpected surprise.
That's May twenty seven.
May twenty seventh?
That's the second meeting.
Okay, all right. Um, do we have a, uh, do we have a motion? Shall, shall we go and do that? We'll just give you the continuance to that date?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. So, um, do we have a motion to continue at the applicant's request to the meeting of May twenty seventh?
So moved.
Seconded. Great, we've motions made and seconded, um, Mr. Swanton?
Mr. Shag, seconded.
Oh, yeah, no, I meant like now we're going to call it this one. Yes. Yeah, this is where you say yes, yes. And. Shit, yes, this is a lot.
Yes.
Mr. Ginta, the, uh, chat pity. Um, that's five, the affirmative. Nice to have it. Thank you, folks, for the presentation and sir, thank you for your comments. And we'll see you back on the twenty seventh.
Thank you.
Take care. All right, um, going to our, uh. Next application and our last one. This is the application of two oh nine High Street. A special permit for non-conformities by Kristen Hunter to construct a garden shed, increasing a pre-existing non-conforming lot coverage. Sandra, good evening.
Yes, good evening. Um, I am requesting relief of or small garden shed. Um, the property is somewhat of a property and recently in. Years since then. Starting the property and that's. He had his new streets to school with John and tree, which had about two over two hundred feet of sidewalk. Three hundred feet of sidewalk and, um. The garden shed would be a little bit more easy to maintain the property with. No more. Originally, when the property was built in the eighteen hundreds, there were several acres of the property and the carriage house by its storage. Um, in modern times, the eighties, it was converted to a family. Then there was areas where it was able to be stored. Tools and end garden and things like that. Currently, there's not very much space for a indoor space now for, for water technology. We have snow blowers and so. Believe the property itself has old growth trees, uh, including several naples and dogwood and. Beach. So in working with historic garden designer, the proposed location is currently positioned here. Um, and we extensively researched the property, um. Trying to find a house to replicate maybe on the property. Um, nothing came out. I reached up to the moral family, able to obtain several photos. Historically, it's. That time where that located, there used to be a side porch. Um, that wrapped around that, that house during Victorian period. So that was the only photo I could find. Um, there was one structure that was an armor that was put in during Victorian period. Um, and we found that replicating something that had Victorian detail was appropriate for high street. And that was a thing that was really fifteen hundreds, really eighteen hundreds. Um, sort of. In the game that hip roof style with a jingle and Doug Coop. So. The recommendations from the historic. Yeah, talking about it. What she does for the main, um. There's a, a picture that the morals were kind enough to share with me. You can see where the location would be. It's in that side. There used to be a very large side porch. And the other photo was the only other structure that was on the property. Didn't make any, we should be replicating that street.
Very good. Anything else?
I, I think that's it. I think it's a minor modification, but less than half one percent of lot coverage, so. And the property is very large, property meant to maintain, um, which I, you know, obviously. We all have demanding Mr. Six on High Street. These houses are always in constant use of things, so. Shed, that would be a little easier.
Very good. Thank you very much for the presentation. Okay. Um. See nobody in the room. Any public comment? One online either, one online. All right, closing that, questions from the board.
Yeah.
Um, two doors face High Street or the one, uh, door faces High Street?
The, um, one door is facing the rear of the property. We can. To either side. The front access so that if there was a snowblower could start. High Street side, continue down Johnson and then come around to the back. Um. Keeping up with the High Street side is the first priority, which is most landscaping area to keep up with.
Will you have a, like a brick walk come out to the, to join the, your sidewalk in front of you?
We currently have put in some reclaimed granite that we received. We've been reclaiming materials. We use some cobblestone.
Oh, to make like a little pathway out.
Yes. And the garden path, they, they've made a couple of suggestions. She's given me some traces, but. Some juror has a resource for historic materials. So we've not put in any new material. I've been trying to really. Limit what we put in for the material. Brick, obviously, on the sidewalk project. We bring up to the carriage house.
Yep.
Um, and that was the city brick, so that's the. H brick, um, which is what the city uses or the. The other pieces of the property will be.
See, yeah, I was asking more out of curiosity because it's like, because based on the, the. The, uh. The, uh, map here, you got thirty one feet. Between the.
That was the required.
Shed side, so just wondering. That's a long way to try to navigate a snow blower over.
They're already there. They're originally in the light stone, they pass, they're already there, so. Um, and that was what was recommended. We could. If one. But.
Oh, no, no, I, I don't have any preference. I, I was merely asking out of curiosity.
So that's, we do have a pathway that goes to the back as well, so. Either wish. Run more back. Whatever, there's a.
Thank you. Either way. But I mean, maybe the two doors. Would be better facing High Street as opposed to the, 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 the sort of man door.
Sort of, the nice doors.
She, um.
Yeah.
He has the farm doors created from a carriage house. Um.
Yeah, the carriage.
Pass the property that I restored the staple detail in the front, which was originally there. Um, uh, morals are owned during moral, which. The, the division of Cadillac, um, and there were two staple doors when. Bired by my mother. Architect in the eighties convinced her to eliminate that detail and, um. Because of our metrics, we decided to do it in the siding detail, not doors.
Yeah, no, it looks great.
We did, so we had the.
And those, so the doors on the shed would look similar to that?
Yes.
Oh, yeah, that's great, yeah.
That's wrong. You know, we, we had two, again, doors put on the side of the houses as well. There was one barn door. Showing and, um, so with the French doors, yeah, French doors that were, again, a lot of the. The architecture in the eighties.
Mm-hmm.
So I kind of struggled a bit, but we can put back some of those details that were originally part of the home, so. My goal is to use, obviously. It's thirty years there, so. Really. Taken a lot of historic steps to maintain the historic member of the home.
Yeah, no, I remember. Situations earlier. Maybe two summers ago, yeah.
So.
Um, no, it sounds like you have a, you have, you've given this a lot more thought than, than my question. Yeah. Probably deserved. You, you've got this. I think, I don't, I don't have a preference as to how you're going to do something. You have it well, yeah.
Great. Any, um, where were we? Any deliberations?
Uh, that's a question.
Oh, question, sorry.
Again, I'm, I'm open to whatever suit. You know. Some. Theory of hedging that in the front. Can be kept or. Not visible or straight as well. On the street side, you won't see very much.
Yeah, no, and that's probably. That's probably good, yeah.
It changes.
Again.
Minimize.
Yeah, yeah, that's something to be.
Any other questions?
Just have a quickie. You scroll down to the one with the pictures, the next page, I think. The top left picture here?
Yeah.
That's what it used to look like?
No, that is. A shed that Allison had designed previously. Ours will be very similar.
Okay, I was gonna say, it looks an awful lot like the one you're proposing, okay, I, I get it.
By, she has something to turn on there.
No, I, I think it's lovely in front, I have no questions.
She, she and I are still trying to find other, I've worked extensively with Mass Historical. Um, trying to find a couple of folly houses that were in Newburyport between the Doug Coop or Copper Finials, I know they were a couple of them. But, um, we've been struggling with a couple of those details, but.
Okay. Excellent, any other questions? Uh, we'll close questions and go to deliberations. Who wants to, uh? Who wants to hit the deliberations portion?
I don't mind starting.
Very good.
Well, to, I mean. It's the usual two-prong test for special permit is a credit in due. Please know it does not. And then is it more detrimental to the neighborhood, it is a small shed, it is well set back from everywhere. It's a small shed on, quite frankly, a large lot for Newburyport with a huge house next to it, it's a little shed. And it's well set back and it's a pretty shed. I don't think this is substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than its current situation, so I can support. Anyone else?
Thank you. Have to agree, and I think this applicant should talk to the previous applicant and we'd be all set. That's a nice.
But.
That's a nice modest.
Yeah, that is.
Yes. Stuck that in. It, it's, it's very attractive, yeah, so I can support it, it's very nice.
I, I can support it also. I can support it.
I do as well, it's very thoughtfully designed, it's lovely and, uh, it's appropriate, um, more than, in fact, and, uh. If we weren't here this evening, any one of us would have believed that it's always been there. Yeah, that's the question, that's right, so well done in that respect, that's a great reverence to the, uh, the architecture immaculate of its primary principal structure to which it's. An accessory and that's, that's hard to do without a time machine. It's, it's nice to see that property coming along.
Thank you.
Very good.
Been a long road. Lots to go.
Thank you, um, alright, uh, we have, uh. No other deliberations, all closed deliberations, we have a motion to approve. Like to make a motion to approve the special permit for non-conformities for two oh nine High Street. Give Mr. Swanton, and, uh, do we have a second?
Sir.
Which has been made by Mr. Swanton and seconded by Mr. Delisle, um, is that right?
Yes.
Thank you. Calling the roll, Mr. Swanton?
Yes.
Mr. Shannon?
Yes.
Delisle?
Yes.
Mr. Ginta?
Yeah.
And I vote yes, five with the affirmative, the motion carries, thank you very much and, uh, thank you for your patience this evening, good luck.
Thank you.
Okay, um. That concludes our public hearings, uh, for this evening and, um. With no other business before the board, we'll close public hearings and go into the business meeting, we have the minutes of, uh, April eighth, twenty twenty-five, any comments for Gretchen, any changes?
I have one.
Sure.
It's just a suggestion and wording, you can leave it the way it is. To be, ah, so it's ten point five. Auburn Street, second paragraph. The last sentence reads, he said the applicant, application does not meet criteria for licensing agreement. You could leave it like that, I think it would be. Easier said, he said the application does not meet the criteria for a licensing agreement. Either way. I had to read it three or four times to say, it was a proposition, miss someone, come on. Anything?
Thank you.
When you leave off of that, it's no big deal.
And Mr. Joy, go forth and sit no more.
Two more. And an act of interest.
Alright.
All night.
Any other, any other comments? I, I say we approve the minutes, as submitted, if we should do approvals we made, uh. Do we, by Mr. Shannon, do we have a second?
Second.
Very good, motion seconded, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
No opposed, no no votes, the ayes have it, motion carries, minutes are approved as, as is. And, uh, that's it, um, I've got nothing, and, and you better have nothing.
I have nothing.
We're canceling our next meeting, right?
That's correct, we're gonna cancel our next two, two, two meetings.
No.
Uh, just one, okay, first of the year.
Is it because of lack of support?
No, the vote, they're voting that way.
Oh, that's, that's special, so we're not canceling it, it's being, it's canceled by, by cancel us.
Something bigger than us.
Yeah, we don't. So we, we don't, uh, we don't have to cancel with, it can't be legally held, so.
Right.
So we'll just note. And note it with all propositions.
That's all I meant to do, I know.
Alright, alright, thank you guys, uh, motion adjourned and we're, we're good, have a great night.
Yeah.
It's all with it, we have a motion, motion to adjourn, all those in favor?
Aye.
Yeah.
You're still adjourned, thank you guys.
Thank you.